Prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering and Alderman Clemmons will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As President of the Board of Aldermen, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance, excuse me, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the agenda or the city's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, dial 1-929-205-6099. Meeting ID is 820-5048-7247. The passcode is 411072. The public may also view the meeting via channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashua's website at NashuaNH.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall and Nashua Public Library. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or channel 16, please call 603-821-2049 and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please, please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
I am present. I can hear the proceedings and I am alone.
Alderman Cle.
I am here. I can hear the proceedings and I am alone.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here. I can hear everyone and I'm alone.
Alderman Dowd.
I'm present. I can hear the proceedings and I am alone.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, I am here. I am alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Clemmons.
Hi, I am here. I am alone in this room, although my wife is home with me and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Lopez.
I am here. I'm alone. I can hear and see everyone.
Alderman Tenza.
I am present. I am alone in the room and I can hear everyone.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm here alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Jettie.
I am here. I can hear the proceedings and I'm with my wife.
Alderman Schmidt.
I am present and I am alone in the room.
Alderman Laws.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear you.
Alderman Cleaver.
I'm present. I'm in, my daughter's in the adjoining room and I can hear the proceedings just fine.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
I am present. I can hear everyone and I'm in this room alone.
Alderman Wilshire.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
You have 15 in attendance.
Thank you. Also with us this evening is Mayor James Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, do you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President, I do. This is the COVID-19 epidemic, the rise in cases that we've seen in recent weeks. Of course, public health has been for months working very hard to contain the spread of the virus. We have a mask ordinance and the city and our community has been working together to try to protect as many of our community members as possible. But the scientists and the medical experts told us, have been telling us for quite some time, that in the fall and as the weather became colder, that we would see a rise in the number of cases. And of course, they're basing this upon their experience with other coronaviruses related to, but not the same obviously as COVID-19. And the scientists, the science was right, as, as was predicted, across the country, especially across the country, more than here in New England, but across the country in many places, in the Midwest, in the South, the number of cases has climbed very dramatically. Various places, hospitals are virtually overwhelmed. Here in New England and New Hampshire, we've also seen a rise in the number of cases, but not to the degree that other parts of the country have, have seen, but still something that we need to be concerned about. I believe Director of Public Health and Community Services Bobby Bagley is on the call if you have any questions or any other need, any further information beyond what I give you, but right now, we have in Nashua 263, excuse me, 150, 150 active cases. Now, you might recall that in the summer months, that number was down to 20 or 25 at various times, but now it's up to 150. And that spans all ages, young people, middle-aged, older people. The number of contacts that have been identified, people who were in contact with those 150 positive patients in the days before they were diagnosed, 263 contacts. That's a lot of contacts. You might recall that we were down, you know, in much, much lower than that during the summer and early fall during, during the better weather. Now, of course, as you know, it's very important in containing the spread of the virus that our public health department do contact tracing, meaning they talk with each of the 263 people, keep in touch with them, advise them that they need to quarantine, take other protective measures to make sure that they, or to try to limit the chances that they would spread the virus to yet someone else. Public health has been doing a very good job in keeping up with this. They've also been holding clinics, testing clinics on a periodic basis, weekly basis. There was one today. Over 100 people were tested today in the Elm Street Garage this afternoon. Now, we have about six and a half people working on the contact tracing and 265 contacts is a lot of people to work with. So you see on the agenda, Madam President, R2092, which is a, the acceptance of a grant from the state of New Hampshire. Once accepted, this will enable the city to take a number of steps with respect to COVID-19, but one of those things is to hire four more contact tracers so that we can have more like 10 people working with these 263 contacts, a number which could rise because the scientists tell us that December might be a heavier month than November. So as we discussed this, our problem, our issues with COVID-19 this afternoon, Madam President, we talked about asking the board to act on this for a second reading under suspension of the rules, R2092, so we can accept the money right away so that public health can move forward and hire the four contact tracers and get them to working to protecting the community as soon as we can. So I hope that the board will consider acting on that resolution. Again, it's nearly the acceptance of state money. I hope you will consider acting on that finally this evening. Let me move on to the election, Madam President, which was of course held on the 3rd. The election went very smoothly, certainly, especially under the circumstances. I can't say enough about City Clerk Sue Lovering and her, all of the staff that she employed during the course of the two elections we held, first the primary and then most recently, November 3rd, the general election. The number of absentee ballots cast was in the vicinity of 15,000, many times what has ever been cast before. And the procedure, the tracking procedure that the state established is very time-consuming. A number of entries have to be made over time for each individual ballot. And I, and I have to say that the city clerk did a tremendous job in making the election come off as smoothly as it did. I saw her working seven days a week for long periods of time, making sure that all of the data got entered, making sure that every vote was counted, making sure that every ballot was handled properly. And I just, again, can't say enough about the job that Sue Lovering and everyone else did in making sure that this election was as successful as it was. And of course, I congratulate all of the people who were successful and winning on a week ago, a week ago today, particularly the five members of our Board of Aldermen who serve in the legislature, all were re-elected. I know all are up there fighting for Nashua, so I want to congratulate you on your, your success. Finally, Madam President, we have tomorrow Veterans Day, which unfortunately, we are not going to have the Veterans Day Parade. We have a veterans committee who oversees the parade and in view of the COVID-19 situation, decided that it was best not to proceed with the parade. And as we discussed this, you and I, Madam President, the, the need, the need to recognize our veterans and, and express our appreciation. We, of course, came across the idea that we and the Board of Aldermen, the city, have never formally recognized the veterans on the Board of Aldermen in the context, in, in the context of an Aldermanic meeting. And there've been a lot of Aldermanic meetings. I've, I've never really seen that happen. Now, the Rotary Club earlier in the week had the veterans from the Rotary Club, this was on Monday, tell a little bit about their service experience. That seemed like a really good way for us to go and we, Madam President, discussed this and thought that we would like to ask our veterans, those being Alderman Dow, Jettie and Cleaver, to take a few moments to tell us about their service and what they did and in a way of expressing our appreciation and in a way of honoring of all of our veterans in Nashua. Let's, let's hear the very interesting stories that we had, we can get right here in our own chamber, of course, our virtual chamber. And whether they, I don't know when, Madam President, you would like them to undertake, to tell us about this now or later in the meeting, whatever you think is best, but I would like to hear from them and of course, thank them for their service as well as all of the veterans. My father was a veteran. He fought in World War II. He was part of the 7th Army, the 70th Infantry Division. He enlisted in 1942, went, trained, was involved in training at various military bases, then went over to Europe, was sent over to Europe in late 1944, where he fought in Northern France and Central Germany. They fought through to Nuremberg against, of course, the German Nazis. And then he, once the war was over, was involved in the administration of the jail in Nuremberg, where the Nazi war criminals were held while the Nuremberg trials were going on. He left the service in 1946 as a captain, came back to the United States and went back to civilian life. So I just wanted to recognize him as well. In any event, Madam President, those are my remarks. Again, thank you to our veterans. And if anybody has any questions or comments, of course, I'd be glad to hear them.
After, after responses to the remarks of the mayor, we will take up the veterans on our board under recognition period. How's that? Okay, response to remarks of the mayor. Anyone? Okay. Recognition period. I'm going to call on Alderman Cleaver to start us off. Alderman Cleaver, would you care to share with us?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Madam President. Yes, I want to wish all the veterans, all of our veterans a very happy and healthy Veterans Day tomorrow. It's, it's always, the, the bottom line is we, we don't recognize and support our veterans as much as we should. And this is a good time to, to thank them and, and, and recognize their service. All, all services, all eras, all, all people. And so I, I hope everybody has a good Veterans Day. I might also say, I'm a US Marine and that, I enlisted in 1965. As such, I wanted to say that US Marine Corps birthday is today, November 10th. This is not a highly recognized holiday outside the Marine Corps, but it's very important to us. And this is the 245th anniversary, 1775. So to all my fellow Marines throughout the, the area, congratulations and happy birthday. I served in the Marine Corps Air Wing, not in the infantry, but in the air wing, and I was involved in fighter squadron training operations. I went to basic training in force, as we all did, and weapons training and so on and so forth, and then to school in Jacksonville Naval Air Station. And subsequently, served in Beaufort Marine Corps Air Station, the Yuma Marine Corps Air Station in Arizona, and Roosevelt Roads Naval Air Station in Puerto Rico, as well as Naval Air Facility Andrews Air Force Base, which is now called Joint Base Andrews. I, I learned a lot. I, I, it helped me to qualify to be an air traffic controller when I got out. So I was, I joined the FAA and was an air traffic controller in Pittsburgh and Boston Mogan. And so it was a good experience for me in that regard. I might also say that my dad was a US Navy veteran during World War II, fought in the Pacific. And in the Pacific War Zone, there was a long mail delay between the, the war zone and the East Coast. So my, my parents referred to me before and after my birth as the skipper. So that's where I got the name Skip. And that's, that's about it for me, but on to, to Mr. Dowd and Mr. Jettie.
Well, thank you for your service, Alderman Cleaver, or Skip, skipper. Thank you. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I joined the Navy in 1968 after graduating from St. A's. It was the Vietnam War at the time. I originally was an enlisted person and went through submarine training and was a special projects electronic technician on the USS Halibut, SSN 587, and was qualified in nuclear submarines. While on the submarine, I was selected for Officer Candidate School and went to OCS in Newport, Rhode Island, served on the USS McCloy, DE 1038 as electronics material officer, electronics warfare officer and legal officer. I did graduate from the Naval Justice School. I am qualified in nuclear submarines and surface warfare officer, and I worked in the defense industry for over 35 years. So I would also like to thank all of our veterans. And I had taken a few of my friends that are Marines to the birthplace of the Marine Corps in Philadelphia. And they were very excited about seeing that particular spot. So again, congratulations to all our veterans and hope that we honor them as they should be honored.
Thank you for your service, Alderman Dowd. Alderman Jettie.
Yes, thank you. I too would like to acknowledge all of our veterans. And I'd also like to wish my wife a happy birthday. She was a Marine in the air wing, coincidentally. I joined Army ROTC as a freshman at Boston College in 1963. As, when I graduated in, from college in 1967, I was commissioned a second lieutenant in the Transportation Corps. I was fortunate enough to delay my active duty during the height of the Vietnam War, which enabled me to go to law school. And when I graduated from law school, I began my active duty then in 1970. After attending the Transportation Officer Basic Course, I was assigned to the Legal Assistance Office at Fort Eustis, Virginia, which was then the home of the Transportation Corps. And then I was very lucky, the, there was a reduction in force and I was reassigned to the reserves, to a transportation reserve unit here in Nashua. And one of my duties there was to develop an emergency evacuation plan for the city. You know, during my time there, then I was assigned to a, a non-commissioned officer academy, which is a school for non-commissioned officers in Concord. And then I was assigned to a, the Ready Reserve Control Group until I was discharged in 1977 with the rank of captain. And so thank you for acknowledging us and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Alderman Jettie. And to all veterans out there, thank you all for your service. Okay, reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I will declare the minutes of the Special Board of Aldermen and Regular Board of Aldermen meeting of October 27th, 2020, except place on file and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communications have been received from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, relative to communications received from the public, from John L. Griffin, Chief Financial Officer, Comptroller, regarding Nashville Fire Rescue IAFF Local 789 Unit Collective Bargaining Agreement Contract Costing, and from Linda McGee, Deputy Planning Manager, regarding referrals from the Board of Aldermen on proposed R2083, authorizing the acquisition of property at 36 Buck Meadow Road, Tax Map C, Lot 762, for a purchase price of $370,000, and on proposed ordinance O2034, extending temporary adjustments to site plans to allow for greater outdoor seating at restaurants.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening.
Laura Cahoon.
Ms. Cahoon, give your name and address for the record, please.
Name is Laura Cahoon at 30 Greenwood Drive.
Thank you.
You're welcome. My comments will be in regards to the purchasing of the lot at 36 Buck Meadow Drive and the property at 55 Franklin Street. In reviewing Mr. Daniel Donovan's letter that he sent out to the Finance and Operation Committee dated October 6th, 2020, that was also attached to the board meeting, board package, I would like to know where he received his information because his facts are incorrect. Mr. Donovan explained that our elementary schools at the end of this past year left us with no extra classrooms. However, in not doing his due diligence, he neglected to see what was actually happening in Nashua currently. The official October 2020 enrollment shows that Nashua currently is down by 860 students. The elementary schools went from 326 students to 165 students. That is a 49.39% drop in elementary schools' children. And the city wants to purchase a building for the elementary children? This action does not make sense. We can assume that some of these students will not be coming back because their parents feel that the children are getting a better education than they would be getting with the Nashua Public Schools. Therefore, why is the City of Nashua purchasing these properties now? Has the city reviewed the financial loss of approximately $3,200,000 at minimum in the financial aid and how is it going to affect our current budget? These are facts that the Board of Aldermen need to consider before making purchases that are not currently in our budget and currently do not need. I also have comments on the Performing Arts Center. The Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment is a joke because it only speaks of the actual building. If the board members actually looked at the two pages of exclusion, they would realize that the Nashua taxpayers are going to have to come up with a lot more money in order to make this project work. Do we have a contractor selected that will do all the excluded work listed? And these tasks have been priced into the project yet? As it is, the City of Nashua is waiving all permit fees so that Nashua taxpayers will be responsible for that portion also. This is tax dollars that are coming out of the Nashua taxpayers' wallets. What are the total fees that Nashua taxpayers will have to eat? Where is the money coming from for the wood plaza decking, the metal frame skylights, acoustical ceiling, title and grid, wall coverings, et cetera? Can the Board of Aldermen say where this money is coming from and how much will it cost? Let every board member vote and let it go on the record because when the city comes back and asks the taxpayer for more money after this project, I want the taxpayers to hold the mayor and the Board of Aldermen accountable. These are questions worthy of answers now. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to give public comment? Seeing none. Communications requiring final approval?
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award transit operation services.
Alderman Harriet Gathright. Alderman Gathright, you're muted. There you go.
Wait a minute. Oh gosh, I forgot about this part. I don't have it in front of me. Which one is mine?
Okay, how about I read it and you make the most? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Alderman Gathright, I think, was trying to make the motion to accept and place on file and approve the contract amendment to the existing five-year contract for transit operations where first transit in the amount not to exceed $372,057 funding will be through Department 186 Transportation, on count number 55690, regular transportation services, and I'm sure Alderman Gathright would like that by roll call.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie. Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 yays and 0 nays.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award Architect and Engineering Services.
Alderman Cleve.
Sorry about that. I motion by roll call to accept, place on file, and approve Amendment 3 in the amount of $158,400 to extend the contract for three years with flow assessment of Auburn, New Hampshire for the Combined Sewer Overflow Monitoring Program. Funding will be through Department 169 Wastewater Fund. Wastewater Account Classification, 53 Professional Services by Roll Call.
You've heard the motion. Is there a discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 yays and 0 nays.
And that motion carries. Petitions.
There are none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
To the Honorable Board, excuse me, to the Honorable Board of Alderman, I have this day appointed Heidi L. McDonald, of 42A Chestnut Street, Nashua, to the Master Plan Committee and respectfully request that this appointment be confirmed.
There being no objection, I will accept the appointment by the mayor as read and refer to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the October 26, 2020, Special Finance Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the October 26, 2020, Budget Review Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the October 28, 2020, Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the October 28, 2020, Joint Meeting with the Committee on Infrastructure and Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the November 4, 2020, Finance Committee, be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of the Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting held Monday, November 9, 2020, regarding Proposed Resolution 2083. Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. I can report that the committee had a very efficient meeting last night on R2083. We heard a presentation from Alderman Dowd about the importance of passing this piece of legislation as it relates to the development of the new middle school. There was a brief discussion regarding the timing of this resolution as it relates to the bond that was previously passed. I can report that the committee, after the presentation, was speechless and passed the passed the resolution unanimously out of committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tenza. There being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of the Human Affairs Committee meeting held Monday, November 9, 2020, regarding Proposed Resolution 20-87. Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes, so we met last night on R2087. And I the committee was unanimous in their decision on this.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly.
President, if I may just add to Alderman Tenza's report, at our entirely succinct meeting, he also was, it was so quick, he didn't even have to turn the light on in his room for the whole meeting.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Confirmation of mayor's appointments. Animal and Dog Park Advisory Board, there being no objection, I will confirm the new appointment of Kathy Abel, 41 Manchester Street, Nashua, for a term to expire October 1, 2023, to the Animal and Dog Park Advisory Board. Is Kathy Abel on the meeting tonight? I don't see her. She will be sworn in at a later date. Conservation Commission, there being no objection, I will confirm the new appointment of Maya Friday, 17 Chaucer Road, Nashua, for a term to expire May 31, 2021, to the Conservation Commission. Is Maya Friday on the meeting this evening?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
The Corporation Council will administer the oath of office. You're on mute, Steve.
Know how to do this by now. You raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Conservation Commission of the City of Nashua according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution laws of the state of New Hampshire to help you God?
Yes, I do.
Congratulations. Congratulations, and thank you for your willingness to serve on the Conservation Commission.
You're welcome.
Cultural Connections Committee, there being no objection, I will confirm the following reappointments to the Cultural Connections Committee. Samba Halcos, 58 Winter Street, Manchester, for a term to expire July 30, 2023, and Lauren Osowski, 57 Profile Circle, Nashville, with a term to expire December 31, 2022. Is Samba and Lauren on the call? Not seeing either one of them. They will be sworn in at a later date. Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R2081, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashville Board of Police Commissioners and Nashville Police Communication Employees, NEPBA Local 125, IUPA AFL-CIO, from July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2023, and authorizing a related transfer of $186,145.
Alderman Jettie.
I move for final passage of R20081 by roll call.
The motion is for final passage. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes, sorry. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 yays and 0 nays.
And that motion carries. Resolution 2081 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R2083, authorizing the acquisition of property at 36 Buck Meadow Road, Tax Map C, Lot 762, for a purchase price of $370,000.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R20083 by roll call and like to talk to it briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I think you all got the presentation that I put together that on the elements of the purchase and sale agreement. I did want to clarify that the monies for the acquisition of this property have already been appropriated in the bond for the middle school project, so there's no additional funding required. And that this passed the the Planning Board and the PDC and the Joint Special School Building Committee unanimously. So if there are any additional questions, I'd be more than willing to answer them.
All right, the motion is for final passage. Questions from anyone? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 yays and 0 nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 2083 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R2087, relative to the assignment of the Community Development Finance Authority Grant, accepted by Resolution R20002.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I would like to move for final passage of R2087 by roll call. And if I could speak to it.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Sure. This is just, we've already assigned all this money. It's just making sure that it is assigned to the appropriate place, so there's no change in the funding here.
Any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
15 yays and 0 nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 2087 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
There are none.
New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution R2089, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $30,345 from the United States Department of Justice into police grant activity, 2020 Justice Assistance Grant, multi-jurisdictional.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Dowd. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Harriet Gathright. Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Karen. Alderman Lopez.
Alderman Laws.
Alderman Laws. Alderman Cleaver. Alderman Cleve. And myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution R2090, authorizing the purchase of land and buildings at 55 Franklin Street, MAP 68, Lot 53.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Cleaver. Alderman Lopez. And myself. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and the National Planning Board.
First reading of Resolution R2091, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of a $5,700,000 lead-based paint hazard reduction grant from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Dowd, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Karen, Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Kelly, did you have your hand up? No, okay. Alderman Cleve. I think that's it. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
I also wanted to sponsor.
I'm sorry, Alderman Lopez.
It's not your fault. I was waving at an empty screen.
Thanks for that.
First reading of Resolution R2092, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $896,349 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activity, COVID-19 Enhanced Detection.
Additional sponsors.
Alderman Karen.
Alderman Karen, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Tenza.
Alderman Laws.
Alderman Laws. And myself. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion to suspend the rules for a second reading of R20-92. May I speak to my motion?
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. Not to rehash the importance of this and go over what the mayor has said, but I think right now with the pandemic, the addition of four people for contact tracing is both timely and important, and I hope my colleagues will support, as I will, in passing the second reading of this motion. Thank you.
Okay, the motion is to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading. Any discussion on the motion to suspend? Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm sorry, it's not a motion to suspend. I can hold it. I just wanted to be a sponsoring, miss my hand.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
So the motion is to suspend the rules. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 yays and 0 nays.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion for final passage of R20-092 by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there a further discussion on the motion?
Know what I got it?
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
My question is, we just voted to suspend the rules, right?
Yes, and now we made a motion for final passage.
Okay, so suspend the rules and second reading was one, not two, you know what I mean? My question is, what we voted for just now, I thought, was to suspend the rules for a second reading. But we didn't get to the second reading, did we?
This is it.
You're right. Linda, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Second reading of Resolution R2092, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $896,349 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activity, COVID-19 Enhanced Detection.
Thank you. So Alderman O'Brien, your motion would be in order now. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to Alderman Gathright for a parliamentary inquiry. Madam President, I would like to stand and make the motion of final passage of R 20-092 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 2092. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Resolution 2092 is declared duly adopted.
First reading of Resolution R 2093, approving the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for the Performing Arts Center.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Dowd. Alderman Cle. Alderman Harriet Gathright. Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Cleaver. And myself. Given its first reading, that will be assigned to the Finance Committee.
First reading of Resolution R 2094, Omnibus Resolution Regarding New Markets Tax Credit Transaction for the Performing Arts Center.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Dowd. Alderman Harriet Gathright. Alderman Cleaver. Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Cle. Alderman Clemmons. Alderwoman Kelly. And myself. Given its first reading, it will be assigned to the National Planning Board. And a special Board of Alderman meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 24th, 2020, at 6:00 PM. New business ordinances.
First reading of ordinance O 2035, authorizing free holiday parking at meters in Zone 3, which includes the Elm Street and High Street parking garages from December 7th, 2020, through January 1st of 2021.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman O'Brien. Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Cle.
Alderman Karen.
Alderman Karen. Alderman Harriet Gathright. Alderman Tanza. I don't know if you're flipping your BS. Alderman Tanza. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Cleaver. And myself.
Alderman Laws.
And Alderman Laws. Thank you.
And Dowd.
And Dowd, okay. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules for a second reading of 020-035 by roll call. May I speak to my motion?
You may.
Thank you, Madam President. At this particular time, because of the timeliness and the date is fast approaching, this is something that we have done by the Board of Alderman annually to have parking for the Zone 3, which includes the Elm Street and High Street parking garages. It's a great asset to our downtown. So therefore, I ask you to join with me in supporting the second reading. Thank you.
Okay, the motion is to suspend the rules. Right, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Motion is to suspend the rules. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yeah.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou. Alderwoman Lou. Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
I recorded 14 yeas and zero nays.
Thank you.
Second. Second reading of ordinance O 2035, authorizing free holiday parking at meters in Zone 3, which includes the Elm Street and High Street parking garages from December 7th, 2020, through January 1st of 2021.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for final passage of 020-035 by roll call.
The motion is for final passage of ordinance 2035. Discussion on that. Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I'd like to amend the motion to include reducing the overnight parking fees in that particular zone to $15. And I'd like to speak on it.
Alderman Lopez.
So we had talked about this at the Parking Committee. We had planned to have a Parking Steering Committee composed. I know that Alderman Wiltshire had agreed to that and is probably in the process of putting that forward. And at the time, it had not made sense to try to introduce legislation narrowing down the overnight parking waiver attempt that Alderman Laws had introduced to the parking area because the Director of Economic Development wasn't entirely sure as to what areas that constituted. We didn't want to accidentally introduce it into in an unknown fashion and as a last minute kind of a thing. But the intent here is this would not only continue the concept that we're already doing with waiving the parking fees during the day, but it would also pilot in a much more minimized way, different ways to modify parking behavior and overnight parking needs. So the purpose, as it was outlined by the Economic Development Office, of parking fees is not to generate revenue. It is to manage behaviors. And in this particular case, we were concerned with Alderman Laws' proposal that if we were too arbitrary with cutting the income and the revenue that was coming from the parking fees that were being collected for people who were parking overnight, we would impair our ability to manage that behavior because then we wouldn't be able to pay for the overnight parking staff that would do it. Their roles would be reduced and they would instead be working during the day. So I'm proposing this as a compromise. It was what we had discussed in the previous meeting in that we can see what the reduction, what impact that reduction actually has without it being an open-ended change to parking, without it costing such an unaffordable amount that we have to discontinue overnight parking. It was considered a fairly negligible amount in the meeting just to do it in concert with waiving the daytime parking fees for this particular, in this particular way.
All set, Alderman Lopez?
Yep.
I did not agree to form the Steering Committee. I agreed to look into it.
Oh, okay.
Just for the record.
So just to clarify, when you look into it, should I propose legislation? Because I don't want to vote to do it if you were going to do it.
No, I already sent you a letter saying I wasn't going to do it.
Okay, I didn't receive that. Maybe you sent it to a different email address.
I'm sorry?
Maybe you sent it to a different email address. I haven't received that.
I sent it to the entire board.
I didn't get it.
Oh, okay. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. It's with some difficulty. I cannot support Alderman Lopez's amendment. The intention of O 2035 is basically Beverly narrow-focused on Zone 3, including the Elm Street and High Street parking garages. That means we have Zone 1 and Zone 2 parking that is unaffected by this. And what Alderman Lopez's amendment, from what I understand and what I interpret, will include a greater geographical that is much more intended than this. And if we're going to get into that, that would require, maybe I would recommend that it go to a committee to be heard. The intention of mine for the suspension of rules for a second reading, we have done this particular motion in the past. It's pretty route. It seems to have benefit to a lot of our constituents, particularly and for the businesses in the Zone 3 area. So therefore, I think we should remain focused on what it is. We do have a pending, as many of you know, Director Cummings has come forward and saying that he is going to have a parking study that will be done. They'll be able to look to many of Alderman Lopez's concerns, which I strongly encourage. But I think, again, I cannot support it because I think this will be too unyieldy and ruin exactly what we're intending to do for Zone 3 only. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
Just so that everybody is aware, the parking garages don't have overnight parking fines attached to them. So the purpose of this, as discussed in the meeting previously, was that there wouldn't be any lost revenue from those areas.
So the motion is to amend. Discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Alderman Karen?
Yes, thank you. I have to concur with Alderman O'Brien that we shouldn't be adding amendments to something that has been a standard for the Board of Alderman for the free parking during the holiday season. And the other thing is that during snowstorms, people do bring their cars to the parking garages and leave them there so that they're not on the street. So I, you know, we've had a long discussion about this, fee reduction, and we put it on hold. And I don't think that this is the particular time to be putting this in as an amendment. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I sort of agree with the previous speakers that we've always used this generic motion to give this ability to people to park during the holidays, no fee during the day, to help our downtown merchants and to help the people that are doing shopping. I would prefer that any motion that, not relative to that, original motion be handled separately under a different resolution or ordinance.
Further discussion on the motion to amend?
Yes, a question.
Madam President. Alderman Lou.
Thank you. Through you to Alderman Lopez. I've heard a couple of times about a parking committee meeting. And I would just like some clarification on that.
So I don't know what clarification I can give. At the last infrastructure meeting, it was a Joint Infrastructure and Human Affairs Committee. My understanding was that the President had agreed to form a committee. She has clarified she meant look into it. There was an email that was sent out that I haven't received. But in that meeting, we had talked about parking specifically because it has come up many, many, many times over the last three or four years in infrastructure committee. And all parking legislation has been routinely tabled or sidebarred. In this case, it seems like I was under the impression that essentially, everybody who spoke previously was willing to entertain amendment here, which was not the case, as they're all stating that was never their intent. I'll have to review the video to see exactly what they said. I would encourage the public to do that as well, I think, just so it's clear.
Thank you. Just to follow.
You all set, Alderman Lou?
No, I have a follow-up question.
Okay.
So that was not a parking committee meeting. It was an infrastructure joint meeting.
Correct. It does not appear that there is any committee in existence at this time that is willing to entertain parking progress. At this moment, all committees that would even consider addressing it on an Aldermanic level are waiting for the parking study. I don't have information as to when that will be.
Thank you.
I do. The parking study, I talked to Director Cummings. The parking study is going to start the first week of January. They're right now working on taking the overnight parking out of the main parking study, the full study. And Alderman, I mean, Director Cummings said it will start the first week of January.
So is, are you saying that the parking study will include overnight? Or that they're taking out the part that we were referring to?
They're taking out the overnight piece that you were concerned about. And they're going to take that part up first.
Okay.
Okay.
Was that in the email that I didn't get? Because I didn't.
Yes, it was.
Okay.
It was. I'm sorry you didn't get it, Alderman. I can forward it to you after the meeting.
Yeah, it might have shed some light on what everybody was thinking.
What, is there anyone else that didn't get it? Okay. Motion is to amend. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Cle.
No.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Karen.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
No.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Schmidt.
No.
Alderman Laws.
Sorry, yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
No.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
No.
Alderman Wiltshire.
No.
You have 4 yeas and 11 nays.
And that motion fails. We're back to the motion for final passage. Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I'm going to support this, as this is something that we do every year. And a lot of my friends own businesses downtown. There's some great new shops downtown. And I know that, as far as I know, the barriers are going to come down. So we'll be getting that parking back on Main Street, which is crucial for holiday shopping. I just want to echo some of the concerns that have been brought up here. And I don't want to belabor this, but I think that it has been very clear that no parking adjustments other than this one have been even able to be considered continuously sidelined. Even the one, I actually did get mine, but it was without a lot of, was quite a bit of discussion in the chamber here. So as we move into master planning and, I lost my head. As we move into master planning and also this parking study, I really hope that the city will come around to, you know, looking at what this looks like and being thoughtful in overnight parking and also just being equitable in how we go about issuing parking fees, et cetera.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah, I am, I'm confused because I don't recall any legislation not being forwarded and discussed at committee meetings, but apparently I've missed something.
Alderwoman Kelly.
To clarify, I think we weren't saying it wasn't discussed, it's been consistently tabled or not brought forward.
Alderman Clemmons.
Was that done by a minority of the Board of Aldermen or those committees? Was there some obstruction that was happening that is out of the norms of our, of our meetings? I'm not sure I understand the point because I thought that we had a majority rules.
It was obstruction that was outside the norms of the meeting.
Could you just speak one at a time, please, Alderman Lopez?
Yeah, I guess I don't understand because I understand that, you know, we have rules and processes in place. Sometimes things get tabled, sometimes they get indefinitely postponed, sometimes we pass legislation. So, you know, I would, I would hope that if my colleagues were seeing that, you know, we weren't following the Mason's rules, that certainly that would be brought forward to the president's attention.
Alderwoman Kelly.
The response is not to say that nobody is following procedure, that the point is that this board has had a reluctance to bring up or vote and bring to the full board anything parking related for a number of years because of the parking study. It's simply an observation, it is not a, people didn't do the appropriate things in committee.
Alderman Lopez.
I would, however, point out that a number of things that are on public record in the last meeting are contradicted by what was said, what was said tonight, which is evident for the public to look at itself. So there was no public meeting where those positions were adapted, or where that, that those comments that it was more appropriate to just amend this to the holiday legislation, which is a direct quote that I'm reading. That seems like that's no longer the case, and there's been suddenly a change in mind. That's not inconsistent with what I've seen. I think when we have public discussion, we are following the rules very specifically and very carefully, but there's certainly been a lot of tension on this board over who's chairing the meetings, what, how, whether they're being impartial or fair to specific things. And again, that's where the public can make its own decision because certain issues just do not advance, and a number of Aldermen will say, we're going to wait for this study, and then I guess it's up to the public to keep track of exactly how many months and years they do that over and over again.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I was going to remain quiet, but since I think what many are referring to is my committee and my committee of infrastructure, and may I, my due diligence to defend my particular committee. As a state representative for 14 years, I have 14 years, I have followed the Mason's rule of order. I have followed Mason in my time here, and part of my duties as Vice President of the Board of Aldermen is to support and to maintain that Mason would be followed. So I take great umbrage to anything that would say that Mason's, or if it was implied, wasn't followed. We did hold the hearings, they were very well vetted, everybody had the opportunity to come up and speak. I am sorry, you did not hear the answer, or you did not have the votes that was required to be in the majority. People do have the right to vote, whether they are pro and con on the issues. Many have voted, and nobody, no vote was done with any fear or favor. However, in between the, the meantime, the infrastructure committee, working with Director Cummings, wants to have the parking study, which would included the overnight parking. Unfortunately, in my powers as Chairman of Infrastructure, I have no control over COVID-19. COVID-19 came into the city and disrupted, as many of you know, and so that the public knows, some of the parking issues. One of the things that was interrupted was in order to help out the downtown businesses and to assist them and to enhance our residents fund, we had restaurants allowing Main Street to go down to two lanes, and that was supported by infrastructure. So we have done great things to come up with that, but because we took away two lanes on Main Street in the example, we also took away parking. So at that particular time, because it was COVID-related, many of the study that could have or should have been done more in a timely fashion were affected by COVID-19. I'm asking my fellow Aldermen, I understand you want, what you want to do, I'm not against, I firmly agree that we need to discuss overnight parking, but none, it is my opinion, and I share the opinion, that none of us here are parking specialists, none of us have a degree in the subject, and I think it would be prudent to have professionals hired by the city to which Director Cummings has procured to come in to look at the overnight parking and to give us proper guidance and recommendations as what we usually get from studies such as this. So to imply, if anybody is, that we are not moving progressively on this is untrue, and you're speaking untrue. I think we just have to be patient and do our diligence as Aldermen. It would be my recommendation to await the parking study that will come out, that is being led by, you know, being hired by Director Cummings and the city, and follow the recommendations that the professionals will come up on this particular subject.
Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, and I just want to echo what Vice President O'Brien just said, because I think it's important that recognize the difference between, that we recognize the difference between basically a group of people making up an independent decision, which we were all elected to do, and not being able to persuade enough of those people to your side on a particular issue. I agree that I am frustrated by the majority of this board in the fact that some of the parking stuff that I wish had passed didn't. However, that's politics. That is what we are elected to do, we each have our own opinion on these things and these matters, and they, you know, we represent our constituents the best that we feel we can. And so when somebody disagrees, and, you know, at a committee or here, that's what happens. And it's not that, you know, there is a force that refuses to do certain things or anything like that, it has to do with the fact that each person is representing their constituents to the best of their ability, and they are voicing their opinion on the matter, and I have not seen yet a situation where a minority of this board has held up legislation, except for maybe once, going forward. And, and so that's a very rare thing when that happens, and when that happens, it's usually on legislation that requires 10 votes. And certainly, anything in relation to this parking study only requires eight votes to go forward, and therefore, if a majority of this board decides that it does not want to move forward on something, then that's what the majority of the board speaks to. And again, there's nothing nefarious or anything like that. I think, I think Alderman O'Brien runs a great committee, I think he gives people plenty of chances to speak and express their opinions, and I think anything said to the contrary of that, I would like to see the evidence of it, because I have not, and I would suggest that we move this forward, and so I am making a motion to move the vote.
Motion is to move the question. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Parliamentary inquiry, lost my thought. This is for final passage, correct?
No.
It's removing the question now.
It's to suppress the more discussion.
Okay.
It's a parliamentary procedure, I'd be familiar with, I'm sure.
Excuse me.
It actually cuts off the discussion.
Could we please speak one at a time until you're recognized?
Oh, would I be recognized? I can clarify.
Alderman O'Brien will have the floor. Alderman Lopez.
I was just trying to help.
It's not helpful. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. My question was to you, just to make sure I knew what, being the first on the vote, what I was doing. It was clearly explained, thank you. So therefore, if the vote is in order, may I proceed with my vote, Madam President?
You may.
Thank you. I vote yes to move the question. Thank you.
Alderman Cle.
No.
Alderwoman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
No.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have nine yays and six nays.
And that motion carries. The motion is for final passage of ordinance 2035. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Madam President, may I just make a clarification, if that's okay? I know I need to say yes or no.
We're in the middle of vote, Alderman Cle. And the question was moved, sorry.
It's just something that was said about the zone and Main Street, and I think it's going to give a wrong, oh, yes.
Madam Clerk?
You said yes? Thank you, I'm sorry. Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Just clarification, did we ever vote on the amendment?
We did, it failed.
Okay, just to reassure us, so on this question, yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 15 yays and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Ordinance 20-35 is duly adopted.
First reading of ordinance 02036, establishing performing arts center board of trustees.
Additional sponsors? Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Dow, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Cle, Alderwoman Lou, Alderman O'Brien, and myself, oh, Alderman Clemmons. Anyone else? Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the special Board of Aldermen meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November 24th, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. Period for general public comment.
Madam President?
Alderman, it's public comment period, Alderman Jettie.
I tried to say this before you moved on to public comment.
Okay.
So I would like to ask the, the special Board of Aldermen meeting on Tuesday, November 24th, is that in place of a committee meeting?
Yes, it's a committee of the whole.
Okay, and so at that meeting, there'll be a discussion of these two?
There will be, and then it will go back to the full board for a vote, Alderman Jettie.
At a later date?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe the same night? All right, I'm going to open this up for public comment.
Beth Scare.
All right, Beth, name and address to the record, please.
Beth Scare, 111 East Tobart Street. First of all, I'm very disappointed with the gossip about, from Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Cle, and Alderman Harriet Gathright, about their personal feelings about my friend, Bill O'Brien. That's, I think that's really inappropriate for a Board of Aldermen meeting. And secondly, I wanted to talk about my State Women's work flag. This was put up, we put this flag up with the permission from Risk Management on Saturday, October 10th. It was supposed to fly until Friday, October 16th. The mayor ordered it taken down on October 11th. On October 13th, our lawyer filed an appeal under the special event procedures for Nashua City Hall, and according to these event procedures, the mayor or the Risk Management or the city had 10 days to respond to my appeal. Those 10 days expired on October 27th. On October 29th, the mayor and Alderman Karen had a virtual Ward 7 town revolve. I reminded the mayor that the 10 days had expired. He said it was legal's responsibility, and they would take care of it. It's now 20 days, that's 10 days past the deadline to respond to my appeal, and I've heard nothing. So I'm asking the mayor, I'm asking Steve Bolton, I'm asking the city legal department to please observe the procedures and respond to my appeal. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to give public comment? Okay, seeing none. Remarks by members of the board? Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President, and I apologize for speaking out of turn. The comment that I had wanted to make was that, I believe that Alderwoman Kelly had mentioned Main Street as being part of that, and Main Street is not Zone 3, which the ordinance, I believe, talked about as far as holiday parking was concerned, so Main Street would not be part of it. I just wanted to clarify that, so, but I apologize for trying to rush my, my comment, which is why I said no to closing comments, but I'd also like to thank all veterans, especially my husband, for their service. I've been proud to be a member of the State Veterans Affair Committee for four years and chair for it for two years. My 26 years with Department of Defense and Department of Veterans Affairs, I've been blessed to work with and actually meet so many amazing military personnel and veterans. I just want to say thank you for their service, and I also want to thank, excuse me, Madam Clerk, for everything that she did for a smooth election process. I know we had lines that wrapped around the building, both for new registrations as well as for walk-in, you know, votes for people that were voting. It went as smooth as you can expect. So I'd like to thank Ms. Lovering for all of that, and thank you.
Alderman Cleaver.
Thank you very much. I would like to acknowledge our wonderful clerk and her staff for the fantastic job they did on Election Day and prior to Election Day and prior and subsequent to Election Day, and I can't imagine the amount of work, the amount of hours devoted, that you devoted to this. So, hooray for the clerk's office and all the workers there and everything that you did to make it a success. I also want to acknowledge and thank the pole workers, who did a great job, and under very difficult, unusual, and unprecedented circumstances. I would also like to thank specifically the Ward 8 pole workers, who did an absolutely fantastic job. It just went smooth as silk, and we are very, very fortunate to have such wonderful people in our democratic process, so thank you very much.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I first want to start off by thanking Alderman Wifsher and Mayor Don just for doing that veterans upfront. It was really nice to hear from our board members about their service, and I thank them for their service, and I thank all veterans in our community for their service. Our way of life is only possible because of the things you have done, so thank you so much for that. I also wanted to say, I don't even know how to say thank you, to Sue Lovering for the incredible job during the election. We were line out the door with new voters at Ward 5, and everything just went so incredibly smoothly. I also just want to thank the citizens of Nashua for coming out in record numbers and exercising their right to vote and put their voice out there, because it's really important to be involved at all levels, so thank you so much for that. Did I miss anything? I think I'm good. Oh, the holiday parking. I was just talking about in general downtown and how this helps downtown businesses, but I can see that that was potentially confusing, so thank you.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
I want to say thank you to Sue Lovering and her crew, as always, a great job. We had pretty few new people in the poles in Ward 9, and they did an exceptional job. and they did an exceptional job, really did. And I was speaking to one of my constituents that worked there. She said it wasn't too bad. I was home by 11:00. I thought that was great, you know? So just kudos to you and your team, Sue, and thank you for all the help. I mean, when I call you, you respond, you give me answers, you tell me what I need to know, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, so first I wanted to apologize. I checked my email while we were talking, and I did find your email. You sent it at 11:45 today. I was just working. I didn't really notice it.
I sent it a few days ago. I sent it, I think, over the weekend.
There might be something wrong because my timestamp says 11:43. So, but I did actually receive it, so I want to clarify that I do have it. I also wanted to point out or clarify any misunderstandings that I might have conveyed. I didn't bring up any concerns about parliamentary procedure myself. I was pointing out that it is used effectively and that my opinion was that people may be more effectively advocating in their own particular way. But in terms of parliamentary procedure, Roberts rules, I think the meetings are generally run effectively. I do think that's important. I think that all transparency is important, particularly right now where we have elections in the national level where, you know, a small group is trying to portray a different reality than is a matter of public record. And that group kind of needs to be ashamed of itself. I think we can be proud of all of the people who are working to make sure that there's a fair and transparent process that everyone has access to. So I want to thank, I want to thank Sue Lovering. I want to thank Barry Carden. I want to thank all the people who dedicate themselves to making sure that the public has access to representation that is representing them rather than just, you know, manipulating politics or any other unfortunate thing. I also wanted to mention a loss and express my condolences to the friends and family of Kristen Wolf. The mural that I use as my background here is the second Hearts and Minds mural that Positive Street Art did. It's called "The Thank You," and Kristen was a huge part of this. Unfortunately, she passed away very recently, and her loss will be felt. But I just wanted to tell her family that her loss may be felt, but her spirit will live on because her work is in the walls of Nashua now. It's part of the community, and it brightens everybody's day. So my condolences, but my gratitude for all that she did.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to, like many others here, thank Sue Lovering and all of the election workers here in Nashua. You did a wonderful job. We had the most people come to vote than ever before here in Nashua, which is great. And, you know, even before that, with the early voting center that we established here in Nashua, we were the only city to do it. We should continue that and have discussions about doing that in the future because I think it was a huge success, so. The other thing is I want to wish all the veterans out there Happy Veterans Day. And finally, just acknowledge the historic fact that we have elected a female vice president who is also black and Pacific Asian. And I think that that is fantastic for this country. And I look forward to President-elect Biden and Vice President-elect Harris to move this country forward in a positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. So again, thank you to Clerk Lovering and her staff, all the poll workers. It really was a full election season, and they came through it, served us all very well. If there is a silver lining in this election, it's maybe we'll have a number of other people who are going to be helpful and want to continue to serve as poll workers going forward. And I echo Alderman Clemmons' comments that I hope we can, as a city, work with folks of the state to make voting easy and accessible going forward because I think what we proved here and across the country is that, you know, there's a right way to protect the vote and to make it so that people have more options rather than just showing up on Election Day. And then, secondly, Happy Veterans Day to all the veterans. Thank you for the sacrifices that you've made on behalf of the rest of us in our country. I think it's important to remember that there are many families in our community in Nashua who have active duty service members who are away from them right now. There are two families that I know of, the Levek family and the Brindley family, who are both in the National Guard, serving luckily, they're serving stateside, but still they're away from their families for an extended period of time. We should thank those active duty service members as well. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, again, I'd like to thank Sue Lovering for the great job. Not only was it the largest election ever held in Nashua, but it was an election held under the COVID-19 umbrella. And I visited every one of the polls, and everything was running smoothly. I wish we saw that kind of a turnout in our regular elections. It would certainly go a long way. Of course, I know that Ms. Lovering probably wouldn't want to see that many people in a regular election. But anyway, and the other thing, I want to thank Dan Hudson, our new city engineer. He and I were working together on the Charlotte Avenue project. We got the paving done because of the weather. We got the paving done the day before the election. And we wanted to make sure that Sue didn't have another issue at a polling place to worry about. So that worked out very well. They're finishing up what they can do right now based on the weather, although it's been really nice lately. They are going to repave the entire street come the spring. At some point here in the not-too-distant future, there'll be solar speed indicators on either side of the school. And that, and there are other efforts that we're going to be taking to reduce the speed of cars and safety of children. The other thing is the middle school project is going well. The planning board passed, as I said unanimously, on the property. And also, they passed unanimously on the site plans for the Penachuk Middle School. Come the spring, they will start the major construction in Penachuk. Right now, Fairgrounds is moving along exceptionally well. We are getting a lot of things done that we might not have. It's the only benefit I can see of the kids not being in school. But the project is moving along faster. I know that Alderman Cle took a tour of the building. I'm sure that she was very impressed by the amount of work being done at Fairgrounds. The other thing is the Frank... Just really quickly, want to discuss the Franklin Street Property Committee in the full board meeting, but it's not just for elementary students. There's the alternative school that's in Merrimack and Brentwood that we have in an alternate place right now that we need a home for, and that's going to occupy one of the floors. And it's the lower-grade kindergartens that will be in that school to free up room. And we do have schools that don't have any extra room. And the other thing, I'd like to, again, thank all the veterans who risked their lives to protect the integrity and the safety and the freedom of all the people of this United States. And without it, we'd certainly be far worse off.
Alderman Lou.
Thank you. First, I'd like to send a special shout out to the poll workers at Ward 6. Vicky Henry and all of the staff there, they had a special adaptation. They had to make this election. They were working in a different building than they were used to, and they did great. And I also want to congratulate Clerk Sue Lovering. It was an incredibly different job this year, and everyone really stepped up. It was, you know, amazing. I can't imagine the task and the work that involved. Thank you very much. And I just want to congratulate Joe Biden and Kamala Harris for winning the election. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to commiserate with the folks who did not come out as they wished they had. I know it's very hard to lose. I know that even on our committee, when you are trying very hard to accomplish something and you can't make it, it really is frustrating, and I'm very sorry. Then I wanted to say, word number one, I don't know if you came out when I forgot to check the numbers, but when I got there at 6 o'clock, when the sun had finally risen, I was told that people were in line at 5 o'clock. And the line at that point was around the entire parking garage, parking area, which was never been seen before. It was stunning to see so many people care so much about something. And lastly, I simply want to give a special shout out to those who have served. It's a gift you give us, and I really appreciate it. My dad was regular Army, and my mom was Women Army Corps, which we always called her a whack, which of course she was. So thank you very much, and thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you for giving me a second turn. I remembered what I had as a final point there. You guys can hear me, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to bring us back to the beginning of the meeting where we were talking about the COVID cases rising and recognize Director Bagley and her team for doing an incredible job with content tracing, et cetera, and appeal again to the community to do their part in this. Obviously, cases are rising. It's really important that we wear masks, wash our hands. If you have any symptom, a runny nose you think is no big deal, don't go out in public. Really help us to get to a better place here in our community on that. Thank you.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. And again, thank you for letting me have a second bite at this apple. But I did omit something that, and Alderman Dowd brought it up. I had an incredible tour of the Fairgrounds Middle School and the changes, and I strongly recommend it. He'll probably kill me for doing this. Any of the board members that might be interested in seeing it, it's definitely worth the tour. I got to wear a hard hat for the first time in my life, and I was really quite excited about it. So, but it was, it really was an amazing, the work that they've done, and they were able to answer some questions that I'd had and so on. I strongly recommend it. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? I would like to thank the city clerk for the work she did during this election, her wonderful staff, and of course, all the poll workers, you know, interacting with the public. It was, it was an interesting day, and I think it was, you know, well-run. Everything went very smooth at Ward 4, and I hear in the rest of the city, everything went really well, too. So I'd like to thank all the poll workers, the city clerk and her staff. Also, Director Bagley and the work that she's doing. I don't know how she keeps up, but like our city clerk, they're just there for us when we need them, and I truly appreciate that. And I'd like to congratulate the state reps that got reelected. Congratulations to all of you. And I have a family member who's in the military and over in Syria, wishing him and every other veteran a Happy Veterans Day. Committee announcements? No committees? Okay. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion that the November 10th, 2020 meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by a roll call.
You've heard the motion? Madam Clerk? Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Sorry, I got disconnected. I hope I got back before I missed anything important. Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 yays and zero nays. And that motion carries. We are adjourned at 9:15 PM. Thank you, everyone.